Good evening. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to the Shrewsbury School Committee meeting of September 12th, 2018. Our meeting tonight is being televised thanks to the work of Mr. John McDonald and the Shrewsbury Media Connection. This meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel 29 until our next regularly scheduled meeting on September 26th. The first item on our agenda is public participation, the first item on our agenda at each regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Public participation provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school committee. Those wishing to do so should contact the chairperson in advance of the meeting and you will be recognized for up to three minutes. Tonight, Mr. Brian Moss has requested to address the committee and we will hear from him at this time. Mr. Moss.
Hi. My name is Brian Moss, 16th Ruthencircle, former SHS alumni and football captain. Hope everybody had a good summer. I just wanted to go over some information on the artificial turf project. Over the past two years, beginning in July 2016, I've raised the health, environmental, and financial issues related to artificial turf to the attention of the school committee in town numerous times. More recently, on June 6th, I asked the school committee what the plan was going to be to address operational procedures related to monitoring heat to avoid heat stress, monitoring Gmax hardness to reduce the risk of injuries and concussions, monitoring infection risk, including MRSA from turf burns, monitoring student exposure to chemicals, monitoring field water runoff, the town's drinking water for microplastics and associated chemicals, and monitoring the finances for the future carpet replacement, including the education of these concerns to parents of students. And over two weeks ago, I sent an email to the school committee again requesting that policy and procedures be implemented and documented prior to the field openings in order to best ensure player safety. To demonstrate how important it is to have policies and procedures around these issues, we can look closely at one of them, the heat issue. I referenced a news report in Utah last year where they investigated how hot the turf fields can get. For example, when the temperature was 83 degrees out, the field was up to 163 degrees. To put that in perspective, I came across a recent Good Morning America news report that came out in July that reported that at 140 degrees, a second-degree burn can occur in as little as three seconds, and a third-degree burn can occur in as little as five seconds. And a recent news report in the Washington DC area included the expert opinion that was given to the DC council member studying the heat issue last year. Dr. John Abram, a professor of engineering at the University of St. Thomas in Minnesota, says that synthetic surfaces can be dangerously hot and recommends that the fields aren't used if registering above 110 degrees. He stated, "This isn't just an inconvenience, this isn't just uncomfortably hot, it could be dangerously hot," he said. To understand how that temperature may relate to student athlete health, an NPR article from 2008 cited a New York City Health Department report saying people can suffer dehydration, heat stroke, and thermal burns at field temperatures above 115 degrees. Even though Shrewsbury High School has water cannons, a New York State Department of Public Health fact sheet cites examples where water cannons only work temporarily, from five to 30 minutes. And just this month, at West Virginia, high humidity levels combined with very warm temperatures and new field turf led to several Marshall County band students being sent to area hospitals for heat-related ... and that this was around 11:17 a.m. So that's showing that different groups at different times. And last night, at the Board of Selectmen meeting, they did state that they would not be taking any action and that any issues that would be dealt with should be addressed by the school committee. And since the Board of ... last sentence, "Since the Board of Selectmen is not planning on taking any action," and therefore I hope you, as a school committee members, can look into these issues, ask the tough questions, and take actions as our students and athletes' safety will depend on it.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. You will receive a reply to your email from the administration within the next few weeks.
Great.
The next item on our agenda are Chairperson and Members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report? Mr. Wensky?
Just a thank you to the teachers, faculty, and staff that have been sharing updates on Twitter and on social media. I can tell there's been a unified kind of collaboration to provide updates and, you know, information on what's happening in the classroom. So I think I saw updates from all nine schools just over the last week. So I really think it's a great thing that the teachers are doing to embrace social media and to really give, you know, the community a perspective on what happens in the schools. So, thank you.
And for those wondering, the hashtag that's the common thread is @ShrewsburyLearn. Colleagues, anything else? With that, the next item on our agenda is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sawyer.
Well, Mr. Wensky, Mr. Palich stole my report. We're going to talk about burgeoning use of social media, but I have requested and invited our district leadership team members, all of our various administrators across the district, to utilize Twitter as a means of sharing some of the outstanding things that are happening in our classrooms day to day. It's really been a terrific tool. I've been made aware of things that I otherwise probably would have known myself. It's some terrific learning activities and student engagement that otherwise you might not see. Do encourage people, and we're working on getting that feed put right into our webpage and we'll be sending out some additional information to the community on that. But it's, again, excellent way to communicate how we're going about educating our students in ways that are consistent with our strategic plan and with the portrait of a graduate that the school committee approved last year. Other than that, we're continuing to be off to a strong start. Obviously, with the weather moderating, it's been more comfortable in the buildings over the last several days, and the excitement of the new school year continues, and we're looking forward to an excellent year ahead. And that is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment of student recognition with regard to our Destination Imagination Global Champions. In May, over 1,400 teams from countries and affiliates around the world participated in Destination Imagination Global Finals. SHS's secondary-level team, Shrewsbury Iced Lattes, were awarded first place in the Inside Impact Service Learning Project. The team is with us tonight and is going to talk about the Destination Imagination program and their experience at the Global Finals competition. So if the team members would come forward and please introduce yourselves to the committee. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Avia Hassan.
I'm Divya Agunathan.
I'm Sneha Ramesh.
I'm Diala Barra.
And I'm Abel Khan. These are the members and I was the coach.
And we're the Shrewsbury Iced Lattes. So what is Destination Imagination? Destination Imagination is the world's largest celebration of student creativity, and our team specifically competed in the Service Learning Challenge.
So we wouldn't be surprised if you guys didn't really know what Destination Imagination was because it's not really a widespread thing throughout. I mean, a lot of countries do it, a lot of places do it. It's kind of gained a little more importance than other places, but it's kind of, not until now, has been kind of a prominent thing in Shrewsbury. But basically, it consists of two parts. There is the main challenge and the instant challenge. And our main challenge was the Inside Impact Challenge, and it's the community service learning, the service learning challenge. And basically, we had to identify a community need and serve it. And Sneha, do you want to talk about what we did?
Yeah. So basically, we had a community project at a place in Worcester called The Little Store. Basically, we packaged presents for children who are in need and are affected by poverty. And so in our certain challenge, we had to create a transforming cash device that like transforms as our project went on. So we created the cash device and we had to include infographics and project plans. So overall, it all came together.
So if you're wondering, the cash storage device for our project, everything that we were going to use in our presentation, our eight-minute skit, had to be contained in sort of a storage device. But to make it easier to compare, it was kind of like a box that was just like a black box that you didn't know what was inside. And as our story went on, it opened up, showed different parts of our project, showed different things we did. So in the middle, there is our cash storage device. And Diala, if you want to explain the rest of the pictures.
And then that picture on the left side, it shows after you open the cash storage device, you can see the background of our presentation, and that was what we had as our ... we called it our Prosperity's Garden, which represented at the end of our project what we wanted after all poverty was gone from the world. We wanted to show how prosperous and how good the world could be. And then also in that picture, you can see our infographics on the side of the box after it's been uncovered. And then on the right side, there it shows another part of our cash storage device, and that shows Poverty's Home, which is the setting we used to when the world in our skit, the world was still impoverished and there was still a lot of poverty. And we wanted to show how, like the newspaper, it like shows how the ... they had to reuse a lot of things, like, and so
Broke it down, all the way.
Yeah. Like how newspapers kind of like, you don't use it as like, you wouldn't use it obviously to build a house, it's kind of to show how impoverished the world was.
All right. Also, instant challenges, quickly, you want to go?
All right. So the instant challenge is the second part of DI. So basically, you have to solve a challenge in a matter of just a few minutes. You have to come together as a group, and it could either be performance-based, task-based, or a combination of both. And so basically, you have to use your creative thinking and just work as a group to find a solution to the task.
Our main challenge. So what we decided for our Inside Impact is that there are thousands of people affected by poverty everywhere. So what we did, as Sneha said, is we partnered with The Little Store, an organization who helps impoverished people to execute a final project, preparing presents to children affected by poverty. So we thought of our project around Christmas time, and we were thinking, oh, there are many kids out there who don't get presents. So we decided to go in that direction with our skit. So we created the cash storage device, which was a requirement of the DI-given project outline. And the inside, we recreated all these little scenes, like the little store itself, where we packaged the gifts, Poverty's Home, and even Prosperity's Garden, when everything went better for the kids who received gifts. And the highlight of our performance was the board-breaking scene, in which my character, I played Prosperity, broke a board, which said "Poverty" on it, and that was represented by Sneha. And I jumped over Poverty's Home, which was my obstacle, and broke the board. And it was really that metaphor that kind of helped us get that final push to first place. And at the end, we had Prosperity's Garden, which was our big grand finale scene. And that's always the judges' favorite part.
I just want to say in the main challenge, like, there's a lot of things that you can bring to DI, and it's just really interesting that you can use your like daily life skills and bring it in. Like Avia had to use her Taekwondo skills to do the board-breaking scene, and Diala had to use her art skills to create the entire Prosperity's Garden with Avia. And we all just brought in different talents and like skills that we had to bring it all together.
Divya does speech in defense, Sneha's super organized, which also really helps her team.
Yeah. So overall, after we advanced through the regional level, which we competed at Air Shirley High School, we placed first there, which was really exciting for us. And then we went on to the state level, which was at WPI?
Yeah.
Which was at WPI. And we were a little more nervous there, just because that was like the last step to getting to the Global Finals. But we ended up placing second there, which was not our best performance, but we knew that just meant we had to work harder. But the top three teams from the state are able to advance to globals. So after that, we drove 14 hours to Tennessee in May. It was a long drive, but it was worth it. We went and we competed there, and we ended up placing first there, which was really great.
After our regionals, we tore down everything we already built and redid everything for globals. So that is the end of our slideshow. So if you have any questions.
May I add something?
Please.
If you want to say in one sentence what Destination Imagination is, you put together all the clubs at Shrewsbury High School and then add five, six more things, and that is what makes Destination Imagination. They teach you conflict resolution, life skills, like putting up with four teenagers. Iced Lattes, because I made those lattes. It's like, like they know how to work together, how to be mad at each other, and how to bring something constructive to the table. And it was, and we, as parents, also learned to deal with each other and with them and all that. And in the presentation also, since they did the Service Learning Challenge, they learnt a lot, like what it is to be impoverished, and they realized, you know, I could see the changes and them talking and all that. So overall, it was, it's like a complete package. It teaches you life skills.
That's fantastic. Thank you for coming before us tonight. I'll open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Mrs. Gonzano.
Congratulations. What an honor. What a lot of hard work. I love the name of your group. What a great ... My question for you is, how did you decide what to improve when you changed everything from the state level to the global? What was that process like?
So after competing at states, we got an experience to see all the other teams and what they had done. So we wanted to take examples from other teams and improve on our things, make our things bigger, better, and make it so we felt that we could compete at the global level without being like overshadowed by other teams, because we wanted to make our products stand out in certain ways, because before, our project was, our cash storage device, it wasn't as big, it wasn't, it didn't have as much in its, inside of it, there wasn't as many scenes. So we wanted to add more just to make our team stand out a little more.
Okay.
There's also a score sheet that you receive at the end of the presentation.
Be back?
They don't tell you what you did wrong, they just tell you like, oh, you got five out of 10 on something, and you'll have to find a way to improve that for the next time.
What a great skill. I think that is such a valuable skill to learn, like, how can I do better? And look, you guys knocked it out of the park. Congratulations.
Mrs. Fritz.
There were probably a lot of organizations you looked at for the service learning piece. How did you focus on this little store? What about that made it the one you wanted to work with?
Well, we looked around for a little while to try and figure out like where we would want to work, where we'd want to do like this, like, community service thing. But I had previously gone with the Indian Youth Group to The Little Store, because it's one of our yearly volunteering things, because I know a lot of different organizations really like to go there, especially since it's so close. It's over in Worcester. And the warehouse is, it's pretty big, and there's so many kids that send requests there that just, like for anything, just anything they can get. And after like going once or twice with the Indian Youth Group, I brought it over to them because we were sort of in a rut, just like, we didn't know where we would go, because there are so many different options. And after we talked about it, we all were like, this is a pretty good idea, let's try and like expand on it, let's go see what happens there. And after doing the experience, we all just loved it, and we figured that it's such like, when you think about it, it's such like an impactful message we're sending out, that we figured there's so far we could go with it.
Right. Excellent. And I think it's great, you know, for young ladies, it's really empowering for women to work together and be successful, and these are really good lifelong skills you're going to take with you. So thank you very much.
Anything further from the committee? Well, we are extremely proud, and you have our sincere congratulations. I'll turn it over to Dr. Sawyer, does he have anything to add?
Sure. On behalf of everyone in the school district, I wanted to congratulate you. This is quite an achievement to be a global champion. I would, and I won't make sure we send it out, the link, but you created a video that we host on our webpage devoted to Destination Imagination, and it really tells the story that you summarized tonight. But I think it is so impressive to see the size of that crowd in that arena, at the global competition at the University of Tennessee, it was just phenomenal. And to think that a team from our school district was tops among all those teams from all over the world really is something to be very proud of, and we're very proud of you for that. To underscore what Ms. Khan said, there are so many different skills that go into this. And when I think about the various ways in which we are trying to have our school district evolve in terms of the kind of learning we want students to be able to do, the kind of skills that we want our graduates to have, that we've articulated in our portrait of a graduate, Destination Imagination matches that very, very well. And it's really terrific to see a program that is providing that to our students. And it's, it has not had much of a presence at the high school level until very recently, so this is a great way to, that your accomplishment, I think, will help that. This goes all the way down to the elementary level. You may recall, we had an elementary team that went to globals a couple of years ago. And I do want to note that Mr. Eric Kraft is here this evening, who is the coordinator for the whole Destination Imagination program for the school district, who's done excellent work since he's taken that over a couple of years ago. Also, the other coach, and I'll let you pronounce the name, because I don't want to mispronounce it, the other person who cannot be here this evening.
He is here.
He is here. Oh, hello. Very good. Welcome, Mr. Hassan. And so, congratulations, and thank you for your contribution. One thing I know from Destination Imagination is that it is very strict that parents and other adults, coaches, really are there to help them make sure they have a place to be, but they really are not allowed to do much coaching at all. It's really very student-driven. So what our students described really came from their imaginations, came from their creative thinking, and it was really outstanding. And one can see why you were crowned global champions. So congratulations. Well done. And at this point, if you would come up, please, and shake the committee's hand, and we have some certificates of recognition for you as well. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
What a great job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Great job.
There you go. Congratulations. Well done.
Nice job.
Congratulations.
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 Excellent.
The next item on our agenda tonight is a collective bargaining agreement with the Shrewsbury Paraprofessionals Association, specifically a vote to ratify. The collective bargaining negotiation between the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, also known as Unit D, has concluded with a tentative agreement, subject to ratification by the respective parties. SPA members voted to ratify the tentative agreement earlier in the week. A three-year contract was negotiated, starting with the current 2018-2019 school year and extending through the 2020-through-2021 school year per state law. In addition to the members of the school committee, the town manager may also vote on municipal school district collective bargaining agreements. Mr. Mizikar is joining us now, and I will turn it over to our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Malone, for an outline of the agreement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Palich. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Sandy Fritz and Mr. John Wensky for being the school representatives on this, as well as Meg Belcito, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. It was an extremely hard-working group, and I'm very pleased that we were able to get to the point where the paraprofessionals were able to ratify earlier in the week. All paraprofessional positions, with the exception of the Applied Behavior Analysis Technicians, received a cost of living increase of 2% for each of the three contract years. And those positions, which are called ABAs, ABA technician positions, received a cost of living increase of 2.5% in year one, 2.25% and 2% for each of the three contract years. In addition, media aides, whose jobs have become increasingly more complex, and we've seen evidence of that, will now be paid on the same compensation scale as tutors, because we believe that the jobs at this point are comparable. Step progressions are being applied, were applicable, and a couple of pieces that we think are very important. We're addressing the development and evaluation of paraprofessional staff, and also addressing administrative operational needs, because we need to be able to serve the students under our care in the best possible way. So those were very important items for us. So I'm open to any questions. There was a, the total projected compensation cost for all paraprofessionals for FY19 is $7,283,300, which includes the agreed-upon cost of living increase and all other financially related items, very close to our FY19 budget plan.
Thank you. Questions or comments from members of the committee? Mrs. Fritz.
I would like to thank Norn Christian, I think she's back there, and Dave Lowey. I think we had really good, open discussion dialogue, better than I think we've had in the past, because we stayed in the room, we did a lot of talking, and understood, I think, what they were asking, what we were looking for. So I think it was a very good dialogue. And a big thank you to Barb and Meg Belcito and to Mr. Collins, because we would have some questions, especially for Mr. Collins, maybe a last-minute request for something and phone calls. So it was a big help for us as we went through the process. So thank you.
Yeah. Just like to echo those sentiments, you know, really appreciate the leadership team and the hours that you spent with us, you know, explaining, you know, and answering our questions, and also to the paraprofessionals, the open and honest dialogue, I thought was really helpful to our discussion. You know, we've been meeting with the paraprofessionals since February, right? So this is a long process, but very, very good, very positive, and really, I mean, paraprofessionals are very critical to the success in our district. So thank you to all involved. Appreciate it.
Anything further? I would like to just add at this time that, you know, my thanks to everyone who participated on the negotiating team for the school committee, Mrs. Fritz and Mr. Wensky, and also the representatives for the SPA. I know that negotiations like this can reduce the relationship, or seem to reduce, the relationship between the school committee and our staff to things like numbers and contract language. But the reality is that we value the work that our staff does more than can be expressed through those terms. We recognize that members of the SPA are incredibly hardworking, that the roles that they undertake become eminently more complex as time goes forward. We see the work that you're doing, we appreciate that, and we hope, to some extent, that comes through in the contractual agreement. But just know that we place a very high value on the quality of staff, not just in the SPA, but throughout Shrewsbury Public Schools. We are as successful as we are as a district because of our staff. Mr. Mizikar, anything to add?
I just commend everyone on their efforts and, you know, hope that after the long process that you've gone through, as Mr. Palich said, that, you know, continue to strive to produce the wonderful things that the school department does. So thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Dr. Sawyer, anything to add?
I would just also want to thank the negotiating committee, it was a lot of time and effort put in by Ms. Fritz and Mr. Wensky, Ms. Malone and Ms. Belcito, and with different support from Mr. Collins. I'd like to also thank the negotiating team from the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association for their commitment to working to represent their membership. I want to echo Mr. Palich's sentiments. We have outstanding individuals who are doing great work for students every day, not only supporting students directly, but supporting our teachers and the work that has to happen in our schools day over day, the operations of our schools, as well as the educational support. They're critically important positions, and I greatly appreciate the work that they do. And I'm very pleased that both the school committee and the SPA were able to come to an agreement that is fair and equitable to the interests that are at play, and looking forward to continued work together as we go forward. And I certainly support and recommend that the school committee and Mr. Mizikar vote to ratify the contract, which, Ms. Malone may have already said this, but the SPA did vote to ratify earlier this week. So they, as a body, ratified, which we appreciate, and it's my recommendation, and Ms. Malone's, that you ratify this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. With that, I will entertain a motion that the committee votes to ratify the new Shrewsbury Paraprofessionals Association Unit D contract per the terms outlined in the memorandum of agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're going to proceed to a roll call vote. Dr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Wensky?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzano?
Aye.
Mr. Mizikar?
Yes.
Mr. Palich, aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, we have a visit from our legislative delegation here in Shrewsbury this evening. State Representative Hannah Kane of the 11th Worcester District and State Senator Michael Moore of the 2nd Worcester District will present an update that will include developments in the state legislature related to public education. Welcome to Senator Moore and Representative Kane. It is, of course, our practice that we'll let you usually do your presentation, to be followed by question and comments from the committee. I am actually going to break with that tradition briefly here. I'd like to open your visit with us tonight just by highlighting the fact that you have done a great service to Shrewsbury Public Schools and to the community at large. For those who may not know, obviously, the replacement of the Beal School is a central focus of our committee. Our legislative delegation, Representative Kane and Senator Moore, got some legislation through that expedited the transfer of the former Glavine Center property to the town in record time. So I want to start by saying we recognize and appreciate that you both made that right the top of your priority list and made it happen, really, at a great
I actually wanted to give a shout-out to my colleague here because the day that we got the final votes in the House and the Senate and sent it to the governor's desk was my birthday, so I joked that the senator gave me a great birthday present. And we cleared the end of session by six days, which was even more important to the both of us because we were worried about getting caught up in the last few days. So we're both thrilled to have that behind us. I just wanted to mention as well that the senator and I were pleased to host at the State House in, I believe, late June or early July, the Destination Imagination team, and it was great to have them there and celebrate. They were able to go and spend some time with Lieutenant Governor. We got to take them out on the front of the State House and overlook the common. And so it was fun to have them there and really celebrate the tremendous accomplishment that they had, and it was great fun to hear about their projects and a little bit overwhelming as well. Thank God, I think, I'm not sure I would have been able to do what they were able to accomplish together, but... And then also just wanted to mention, you know, I'm fortunate to live in Shrewsbury and to have three kids in the Shrewsbury Public School system, so just wanted to commend you for a great start of school again. I'm a little bit hesitant to say that I have a senior this year, which is a tad frightening. I attended the nuts and bolts presentation last night on everything I need to know about the college planning process. So it's an exciting time, but just another great opening for the school year for all of you, and really want to thank you for all the effort it takes to make that happen so well. So we're going to sort of share the presentation as usual, so you want to start off with the...
Sure. Well, again, it's a pleasure to see you all. Thank you for allowing us to come and update you. Just to go with what we did in the budget this year, the final budget funds for Chapter 70 local aid were at the highest levels that we've ever appropriated before. We increased education investment, allowing us to do a $30 per pupil minimum funding. And we also did a 100% effort reduction to bring all school districts to within their target local aid contribution. We provided $318.9 million for the Special Education Circuit Breaker, which is the 75% reimbursement, which is statutorily required for the legislature. $90 million to reimburse school districts for the costs incurred when students leave to attend charter schools. We did another $68.9 million for regional school transportation, which was $7 million more than the fiscal year 2018. We did $4.9 million for the school breakfast program and a policy change that ensured free and reduced-priced breakfast is served after the start of the school day, and an additional $200,000, which was additional $200,000 increase over fiscal year 2018. The Senate budget that was appropriated for Chapter 70 was $19,887,000, excuse me, and $358,000. The fiscal '18 final budget for Shrewsbury was $19,706,38, which comes to a difference of about $181,000. And now we'll go back to Representative Kane.
Sure. So in addition to the budget, working on, were several pieces of key legislation that were moving towards the end of session, and we both updated you on, I think, both the civics bill and the foundation budget. The civics bill did get passed coming out of conference committee unanimously by both the House and the Senate and sent to the governor's desk. The governor has sent back two amendments to it, which are currently sitting in third reading. I don't expect that that will be a major issue. I would expect that those would move in the next couple of months, so the legislation would get finally signed into law before the end of this session. The amendments, I think, are minor and don't seem, at this point, to have any controversy to them yet, but as of yet, they haven't moved. And part of that is because August is typically a fairly dead time at the State House, and so just now it's really getting back into the swing of things. So I know that both the senator and I, that's a priority to make sure that moves. The foundation budget, unfortunately, the House and Senate had different versions of how they went about trying to accomplish what the Foundation Budget Review Commission had found as the gap in funding versus the commitment versus what we're putting out there. The House and Senate had different tacks on how to do that, and the conference committee worked until just about the last hour of session, but was unable to come to agreement on that. That was a disappointment to everyone in the State House, but there is an agreement by both chambers and both parties to move forward in the new year with trying to resurrect a way to accomplish what the Foundation Budget Review Commission set out, and hopefully we'll do that over a sooner period of time. Right now, one of the differences is in the timeline of how to accomplish that between the House and the Senate. There's some disagreement about how aggressive to be. Part of that comes down to funding available for it, but we will continue to advocate. Obviously, we understand the importance of that and have both been very vocal in trying to move that along. As part of the budget process, there was also two line items that the senator and I were able to advocate for. One was for $50,000 to Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, and that was so that they could continue their youth mental health first aid training. They had had a three-year grant of $125,000 a year, and they were able to train about 750 adults across Central Mass and even further beyond, and that led to over 400, most students getting connected to services earlier versus later, which is the challenge that we have when kids present with something, is really being able to tell that there's an issue brewing there with them and getting to them sooner. And so we put in for money in the state budget so that they could continue to really work through the long list of other communities that have asked to be trained on this. And a lot of the training does go to schools and public safety officials. I know in Westboro, I think they trained all of their teachers on this so that they could recognize the symptoms and make sure that they referred students for assistance. And then, do you want to cover the...
Then the other $50,000 that we were able to obtain was to fund the feasibility study for the town of Shrewsbury's communication system for your public safety departments. So when I was speaking to the town manager, he has already sent a letter to A&amp;F, Assistant Secretary of Public Safety, requesting that money be released, and I think Representative Kane has also spoken to Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, and they have also requested it. We also were able to, in the environmental bond bill for the town, we were able to get authorized $100,000 for the invasive aquatic plants, the removal of them for the lake consignment. And we were able to also get in the economic development bond bill, $1 million was included within the bond bill for the repairs and improvement of Main Street Gateway and improvements included in the Dean Park master plan.
One of the other line items that we always talk about in the state budget is the out-of-district pupil transportation. Last year, that had been funded at $242,500. This year was funded at $250,000. That is an issue that we both fight each year because the parity between that and regional transportation is not there, and so we continue to work on that. We also have a bill that, right now, is in third reading in the House, which seeks to give towns the ability to charge a bus fee for those students who are being bused out of district, which you currently can't do at this moment, and it would have to be in line with your existing bus fee. But as a matter of fact, in Shrewsbury, the kids that get bused the furthest do not pay a bus fee. And so while I won't make a lot of friends with parents who have kids that go to Aspet in my friends' group, it makes sense that we all are contributing to the busing, and so we're still hopeful that we can get that moved before the end of the year, and it is a priority for both of us. The revenue up right now is about $53 million over benchmark in July and August, which comes on the heels of fiscal year '18 closing out at about $1.1 billion over benchmark. The governor had filed in July a supplemental bill that did include about $70 million, part of which would go to address school safety and part of which would go to address some of the mental health needs in the schools. And we thank you for your advocacy to us in support of that. We were talking about it before. Again, it has not moved yet in the State House. It does have to, and closing out the fiscal year is not possible until that $1.1 billion is dealt with. So I know that there is certainly a time constraint there, and I know the Comptroller is pushing very hard for this to get done, so hopefully we'll see some movement very soon. Again, there hasn't been a lot of controversy, I don't think, regarding the governor's bill in terms of directing that money. It just simply hasn't moved at this point, so we will continue to stay on top of that.
I would also just say, with the upcoming new legislative session, we've got a new senate president, and the House is going to have a new Ways and Means Chair. So I would strongly recommend, if you have any other initiatives that you want us to pursue with the new leadership changes, just please reach out to us, because we also will have to be, I guess, feeling out the new leadership on how they feel on certain issues. So, but you never hesitate to reach out to us, but please don't hesitate.
And I think, just in closing, we were very pleased, as we said, to see the Glavine legislation moved forward, but also very, much behind the effort to build a new Beal K-4. It's a very critical step for our town and certainly want to do whatever we can to support that as well.
Well, thank you both very much, and we certainly appreciate your support and the update. Colleagues, questions and comments? Mrs. Fritz?
I think the comment Representative Kane made about really parity with that, with the district for out-of-district busing, yes, it's probably not going to be popular, but that is a question we do get, you know, why? And I think where we do charge a bus fee in town, that's significant. There needs maybe to be some parity in that, while not popular, I think it's fair.
And that's why we're sort of fighting at the state level on both fronts. We're fighting for more money in the budget so that there's parity between the regional transportation, which right now is funded around 80%, versus this is funded around 7%. And the good news is it doesn't take a lot of money to get this account up to 80% because it's a much smaller piece, but we're fighting sort of that on a budget year-to-year basis, and then we're also filing the legislation, as we said, to at least give you some outlet to give parity in a small amount of revenue that will come in from that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Dr. McGee?
So on vocational education, I think the demand exceeds the supply there. If we also look at employment opportunities, the opportunities for graduates with vocational education, again, exceed the supply. So it seems like we're missing an opportunity. I certainly feel bad that we're not able to make available to our students the resources that they would read, to which they would like. And I wonder what your thinking is regarding expanding the availability?
Well, I can tell you, in the Economic Development Bond Bill, there was one amendment that did not get adopted. I believe it was to increase, to provide funding to increase the expansion of vocational education through Massachusetts by a billion dollars, which would have went to the Oak Schools. I do know, within my senate district, I've got four vocational schools, and between those four schools, I've got roughly almost 2,000 students who are on the waiting list. We are in the process right now of Blackstone Valley Tech. I know it doesn't service Shrewsbury, but myself and Senator the Fat Man, we were able to get $4 million passed in the bond bill, and we are trying to seek that authorization right now to expand the opportunities there. They have about 600 students on their waiting list. So whatever, I am a strong advocate to trying to help that backlog. So whatever we can do in collaborations or creative ways, or just trying to, if you have a, if you want to help us advocate for more funding for Aspet, please let us know.
The challenge is really twofold. The capacity issue is adding on so that there is the ability, both in terms of the actual physical building and then obviously the staffing model, to support that. And that is something that actually gets quite a bit of conversation at the State House. It is not unique, obviously, as the senator just said, in this area you see the demand for it, but that's across the state, and so there's many voices who are advocating for this. The one area where we have seen some really good results is additional funding for making sure that within the vocational schools, they're working on the latest equipment there. And that is something Aspet has received quite a bit of funding the last few years to purchase new equipment, to make sure that when students are getting the training there, they immediately can then go work for a business who is going to be using that. And that's been something I know that's been very much celebrated throughout the vocational school system, a feeling that there's an understanding that you can't be working on something that's 10, 15 years old in terms of equipment and then make that person out in the marketplace be somebody that's going to get hired. And so that piece has been a strong focus, and there has been more dedicated funding for that, but it is a challenge in terms of how to expand. A lot of it, the challenge also becomes because you have multiple communities invested into one technical high school, which makes it far more difficult to figure out how you do the expansion on that. But there has been conversation relative to, do you have something like the MSBA program in which you can have some pool of money that could go towards that? Those are conversations that go on.
One of the, actually, I will just use the Blackstone Valley issue right now that we have. The MSBA agreed to fund an expansion several years ago for the $4 million that went to the district communities. I think they voted it down by one or two communities, and obviously the cost, as I think Representative Kane was talking about, the cost of the communities, okay, it's built, you've got to incur now those additional costs on a routine basis. Well, the initial feedback we've gotten from the administration finance is their concern is us going around the MSBA funding vehicle by getting the expansion through a bond bill. The MSBA luckily has already written a letter for support to do this so that the communities don't have to bear the cost of the expansion. They will have to bear the cost of the additional staffing at the school in that capacity. But, so I think that's the issue we've got to get around, is will we have the MSBA authority and process in place? If we now start looking at another process to expand the capacity of our Oak Schools, it's now circumventing that whole process. So I guess this is where, whether it's the Superintendents Association or the School Committee Associations, if we can get support from those two groups to maybe to establish a separate funding process or one-time bonding authorization to do this, that could be helpful to us in trying to expand the services.
Also, if I could just give you one other quick update that I failed to mention, I was approached by some families who live near the Oak and Sherwood Middle Schools and who cross over Maple Ave to have to get to school, and there was concern relative to the crosswalk being unsafe. And so in conjunction with the town, our offices had reached out to Mast dot, and before the start of school, they were able to update the signage at the crosswalks. It's sort of near where the Shrewsbury High School, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services offices are, the crosswalk there. But then we asked them to continue looking at it because we didn't feel that was enough, and the feedback we were getting from families who were using that crosswalk is that cars were not stopping. Mast dot did go out, and their analysis showed about 60% of cars flew by even when there were kids in the crosswalk. So they are now in agreement to put in an RRFD-B. It's the Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon, which sort of works like a crosswalk light button where you press it, and it will flash to get the attention of drivers that are coming, to let them know someone's in the, and then once the, it's for a defined period of time, a minute or two, and then it will go off so that people don't get used to it and then stop paying attention. It will take several months for them to put that in because it requires bringing power to the spot and design work, and so we've let Selco know they are ready to work with Mast dot to do that. So by the end of the year, and hopefully sooner, that will be in that location to deal with that. And then also was approached by some folks coming off of 290, the, if you come to the end, where you either go straight and you're at a light to go left or right at the end of the street, or you bear right off of that exit and you're coming up on the high school, there's a sign that says Shrewsbury High School with an arrow, but it is actually when you're at the light, and so you really can't take a right there. Mast dot is going to move it back on to the beginning of the island so that people at least have some chance to take the right before they get caught in the left lane. So they are, Mast dot is doing those two updates for us, so wanted to mention that as well.
Maybe the last thing?
Go ahead.
You know, the administration released a school violence report and legislation. I don't know if that is actually going to be done this legislative session, but if it's not, I would think that would be one of the priority pieces of legislation next year. So I would just ask that if you had the chance that you review it, so if there were any issues with that that we need to know about, we're prepared to look at that legislation and try to amend it and address your needs.
Thank you. Further questions and comments from the committee? Just a few from me. I would like to echo Dr. McGee's remarks about vocational education. Obviously, we are experiencing more and more students who are on that waiting list, and obviously, we've had continuous conversations as a district and especially our district leadership team about what sort of opportunities we can offer our kids to meet some of those needs, but the fact of the matter is, we're a K-12 district, we're never going to be a vocational technical school. So there are some students who are looking for that type of programming, and we're not going to be in a position to offer it to them, so we can appreciate your continued focus and advocacy on this issue. And then the only other thing that I would mention, and you had talked about what happened with FBRC, and, you know, we got to the 11th hour, and there might have been a deal, might not have been, obviously, just to remind you both that that remains a priority of the Shrewsbury School Committee. We have endorsed the adoption of the full vote of... So we can appreciate your continued focus and advocacy on this issue. And then the only other thing that I would mention, and you had talked about what happened with FBRC and, you know, we got to the eleventh hour and there might have been a deal, might not have been, obviously, just to remind you both that that remains a priority of the Shrewsbury School Committee. We have endorsed the adoption of the full vote of FBRC recommendations. We, of course, understand that getting something done might mean that not everything happens all at once, but whatever can be done in the coming session, we think would go a long way. So appreciate your continued work and focus at your Ways and Means Chairs, at your respective chamber leaders, just hammering away at that as we know you do. We certainly appreciate that.
Dr. Sawyer, anything to add?
Thank you. I just want to again thank Representative Kane and Senator Moore for your continued advocacy on behalf of our school district and our communities. In terms of the, some of the items you brought up in terms of the foundation budget piece, the Superintendent's Association I know is meeting, the leadership is talking about doing some continued advocacy on behalf of all superintendents. And I know that although we might not in Shrewsbury benefit as immediately and as dramatically as many other districts, I certainly, on behalf of my colleagues in other places, whether that's next door in Worcester or other gateway cities or other places that are struggling in a variety of ways to finance the kind of education that students should have, that your continued support around that is important and much appreciated. In terms of other areas, you've mentioned school safety and mental health, or I think those are areas where the more opportunities we have to bring things to the front lines and help school districts do the work that they're trying to do, there's good things happening in our district along those lines and also with community partners like Scape relative to the opioid crisis. We have a great event happening in November with that for middle school parents that we'll be publicizing. But oftentimes, it's just those dollars that aren't available that can fund either a certain kind of training or additional resources relative. We're very eager to see what comes from, once the funding that the governor's recommended hopefully is approved and released relative to school safety enhancements. So we'll be looking to see how we can continue to move the needle on that. We've done some excellent work, I think, in the last several years, but there's always more we can look to do. And then finally, with regard to the vocational technical education piece, as Mr. Palace referenced, you know, certainly we're not going to become akin to a vocational technical school. That said, the strategic plan that the school committee has charged us with really does focus on creating more real-world kinds of experiences for students, more educational experiences that are going to provide them with the kind of skill set that will be very useful in the workplace. I'm thinking of programs like we have now in our engineering courses at the high school with Project Lead the Way, which is something we may wish to expand, but there oftentimes are initial capital costs for that that are very difficult for us to absorb. So along the lines of the very successful funding for updated equipment for Chapter Seventy-four schools, something in parallel to that, that traditional districts might be able to benefit from in terms of equipment or in terms of technology could be something that would be very effective to move that, to move that forward.
Can I ask, what would the initial cost rate, the seed money be?
You know, the whole variety of programs, I wouldn't be able to tell you, but I know that in one example, you know, there could be a set of, you know, updated drafting computers for drafting, let's say, there could be, you know, a twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand dollar outlay initially, you know, it could be twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars that may not be readily available in our budget, but, you know, in the grand scheme of things, not a lot of money for a program that might be looking statewide to seed some of these programs for initial startup costs. So just something to think about. Now, I'll talk to our team about it and be in touch and maybe some examples of things that could be done as we look to start administering our strategic plan.
As an example, the two line items that we're able to get in the budget, the two fifty thousand dollar line items, if you can get, if there of that, in that range of costs, those are things that we might be able to advocate and be able to get before you win the budget. I'll take some pressure off you.
Appreciate that. But, and then finally, again, for the Glavine Center piece, we're going to make a report a little bit later on in this meeting to update the community and the committee on the Beal project. But anyone I've spoken to when asking about the site of the school unanimously feels that that's just a terrific site to put an elementary school and to be able to take a site that the state was no longer using and put it hopefully towards long-term community use for a school site as well as, of course, the agricultural and the youth soccer, I think is a great benefit to the community. And your work to make that a reality is very much appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work and being here this evening. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is under policy. It is the adoption of town policies for energy reduction and fuel-efficient vehicles, specifically a vote. By way of background, the town is pursuing a designation as a green community through the Commonwealth, which will result in eligibility for grant funding for various initiatives related to energy saving, reduction in emissions, and so forth. For a municipality to gain this designation, letters of support from the superintendent of the public school district must be provided to confirm that the district has adopted the municipality's energy reduction plan and the municipality's fuel-efficient vehicle policy, which does not apply to school buses, which are, of course, contracted, they're not ours. At the school committee meeting on August twenty-ninth, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins provided a summary of how the town's energy reduction plan and fuel-efficient vehicle policy apply to the school district in advance of the vote we're going to take tonight. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Sawyer or Mr. Collins to see if there's anything further to add at this time.
I don't have anything to add.
Any public feedback received on this topic? Members of the committee, any questions or comments before we move to a vote?
No.
With that, I will entertain a motion that the committee votes to adopt the Town of Shrewsbury's Energy Reduction Plan and the Town of Shrewsbury's Fuel-Efficient Vehicle Policy and authorize the superintendent of schools to sign all necessary documents noting said adoption regarding the town's application for green community status.
So moved.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is under Finance and Operations. It is a report on personnel hiring for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Ms. Malone, our Director of Human Resources, will present a report describing the personnel changes in the district for the new school year, which, of course, we have all received in advance in our meeting books. So I will turn it over to Ms. Malone.
Good evening. This is always my, well, I say they're all my favorite, but it's one of my favorites. Bringing in the great new educators that our team finds. It's very exciting. So you have a lot of details, obviously, in your report, but just to give a brief overview, we always like to speak for the public's benefit as well as the school committee about the rigorous hiring process. You know, the piece that changed just a few years ago was adding an additional background check. But this is a process that has stood the test of time for many, many years, has worked very well for the district. And we continue to work with our district leadership team on reminding each other and enhancing ways to go through the different parts of this process. We had found in previous years as well as this year that we really hire a very small percentage of the people who apply to our positions. Of course, it varies based on the position itself with certain areas such as English language learner, teachers, English as a second language, teachers for our English language learners. Those positions are very difficult to fill as well as special education positions. So if there are aspiring teachers out there who are watching tonight, it would be wonderful if you could think about majoring in those areas because that would certainly help us and a lot of our fellow districts out. So one point six percent of those who applied to the professional positions were appointed and seven percent to the paraprofessional positions. So this gives you a sense of the number of searches that are conducted. I think one that was a little bit different this year was we did have two opportunities for promotion within our information technology department, an area that continues to expand for us and be an important area of focus. We did have seven teachers transfer. And in terms of leadership, we did hire a new Director of Physical Education, Health and Family Consumer Science. And I always like to say thank you because it takes everybody, parents, students, educators, administrators, office staff, and so many people pitched in this year. We did have some last-minute hires at a time when I unfortunately, as you know, had to be out of the office. I would very publicly like to thank my colleagues, both on the central office leadership team and the office workers who did a phenomenal job at bringing in those last-minute hires. So thank you to everybody for that. Questions?
Questions from the committee? Comments?
I just have a comment is that I love that you show us the new hires and where they went to school. And it's quite a broad range. You have some people from China, from London, that were educated there. And then you have really strong state schools that have wonderful teaching programs that just turn out outstanding educators.
Yeah, we had a number from University of Massachusetts at Amherst this year. And they have a very strong five-year program.
That's right.
We've had some success with graduates of that program.
It's wonderful to see the diversity of where people have studied and all that knowledge they're bringing to our students. So thank you for presenting it that way.
Thank you.
Mr. Wensky?
Just to add to that, I'm struck by the number of applicants that you have to vet. I mean, we're talking about twenty-eight hundred total, you know, and to pare that list down and then to have, you know, one point, one point six percent appointed to the roles, it's daunting.
And that's, that is really very much the work of our district leadership team, going through, reviewing those application packets, doing phone screens, going through all those steps of the process, and of course, including the teaching lessons. They have to do a demonstration lesson in front of students. And somebody can interview very well, but it doesn't mean that they are the best teacher in front of students. And we solicit student feedback on that as well. And that's how you get from a big number like that to that, one percent. A lot of people contribute.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Dr. McGee?
I'm just curious about the denominators here. When we look at the teaching positions, there were roughly, was it forty, somewhere around there? What's the denominator we're talking about for the total number of employees in that position? Is it around three hundred, three fifty?
The total number of teachers in the district, I think it's more like five hundred.
Five?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Dr. Sawyer, is that about what you think it is?
Yeah, high four hundreds to five hundred.
High four hundreds to five hundred.
And are all of these full-time? Are there any part-timers?
We do have some part-timers in the mix. For example, we hired a part-time school nurse for Floral this year. We have had a part-time health or PE positions in the past, part-time foreign language in the past, so.
And the paraprofessionals, roughly, what percent of the group is being hired this year is new?
So paraprofessionals, I really track more the FTE of that. The total FTE is about two eighty, but there are more than that because there are, obviously there are a number of part-time roles.
So of your staff, would you say ten percent?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Ten percent?
There's two hundred and eighty people, but it's lower than that in total FTEs.
Okay. And so a typical year, you would replace ten percent or fifteen percent of the professionals?
Let's see, let me think about that. Replacing staff has become more of a year-round exercise. The economy has been so strong for the last couple of years. I would say that the turnover has been a little bit higher. I think I did calculate it a couple of years ago at around ten percent, which is actually quite low for an hourly role. It's really not a high turnover rate. ABA technician is really the most difficult role to recruit and hire for. There's a great need for it. And both private and public institutions need people who are skilled in that kind of work.
Among the teachers, do they all come in at step one or are there some that are coming in?
There's some variation. It depends on what we're looking for, for the role. If a team has largely new teachers on it, new to the profession, the hiring team might decide they're looking for a little more experience this time around. You know, it just really depends on the decision of the hiring team. And of course, we always look at budget considerations to make sure we can afford the best-case scenario for students.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions or comments from the committee? Just to sort of dovetail off what Mr. Wensky observed about the number of applicants, I'm always struck by the low number who are ultimately offered a position, one point six percent. I mean, we have an extremely competitive pool of folks who want to come work in Shrewsbury. And it just speaks to the extreme level of talent we have amongst our staff at all levels. We really wind up with the best of the best and they make us the best, so happy to see that. Dr. Sawyer, anything to add?
First, I want to thank Ms. Malone for coordinating all of this work from a district level. It's a very significant workload to be doing that. And her team, in terms of both Chris Matero and Katie Fox, working in the HR department, there is a lot of paperwork processing in our payroll department as well to onboard people, particularly in the summertime when we have a lot of hiring, especially for the hourly positions that tend to happen more in the mid to late summer, to get people onboard as quickly as possible, as well as the leadership team for the work that they do and everyone who participates. I do think that, you know, our leadership team is looking for educators who will be a good fit. You know, we have a budget target of approximately master's degree, step four or so. And we certainly have brought in lots of educators at the step one who are brand-new to the profession and we think have great promise, some who might have had a couple of, you know, a handful of years someplace else who may be moving to the area or looking to move to a different district for, in terms of they're attracted to Shrewsbury for different reasons. And in some cases, some experienced folks for certain needs that we had where we felt that was the right fit and we could make it work within the budget. But in terms of the additionally, just of interest, I think, I was scrolling through, I think I can count four and maybe more Shrewsbury High School graduates who are coming back into the profession, which is very gratifying to us, of course. And when we meet with them in their final interview as I appoint them, and we're talking about, and Ms. Malone and I make a point to talk about our culture and our values and for them to be able to articulate that they were, felt that as students, and that was one of the things that attracted them to work here in a professional capacity. This is the first time also that a candidate did indicate that she had actually been in my office when I was the Assistant Principal at Floral Street School.
I was just going to tell that.
A very, very minor interaction that happened in second grade, very minor. Did not show up on her quarry with fingerprinting. But I had certainly forgotten that, so she was being very forthcoming. But it's really terrific to have students who have gone through the district and that we knew as students to come back and work with us professionally. It is a very desirable district to work in. Certainly, the school committee, the tone is set from where you are relative to the candidates we talked to in that final interview. We go over our strategic priorities and the portrait of a graduate, and people are very excited about the work that we're doing. And that's a hugely important piece because obviously, we need to remain competitive when it comes to compensation and benefits. But to really attract the best, we need to be doing exciting work and work that is at the forefront of what education can be and should be. And I think that's definitely, people are getting the message and noticing the work that we're doing. And that's something that the school committee should be proud of, and I certainly am a superintendent. But thank you again to Ms. Malone and her team and to our leadership team. I think it's an excellent group of new educators.
I would also like to add that this is the first year that we've had a one-minute video to show all of our new hires.
That's right.
Leading the Nation video that was put together by high school students last year has been a terrific tool. We talk and Dr. Sawyer is very convincing and inspiring, but that one-minute video garners a lot of comment, a lot of wows, a lot of, that's amazing. And that falls under the pictures worth a thousand words category. They couldn't have given us a better tool to show what Shrewsbury is all about. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Hope Dr. Sawyer remembers that I was also once an elementary school student in his office when he was Assistant Principal at Floral. But look how the tables have turned. The next item on our agenda is an update on the Beal Early Childhood Center building project. Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins will present the committee with an update on the initiative.
So we're happy to give you this presentation this evening and bring the committee up to speed. I know you've been monitoring what's been happening. We had a building committee meeting this past Monday and previous week where we approved and voted the schematic design package to be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and it has been submitted now by the project team. If you advance to the next slide, this is, this is the vision. This is an aerial view of, a mock-up of what the new Beal school, cited on the Glavine Center, would look like. There'll be some design... Um, there'll be some design changes, of course, in the next phases as it goes forward, assuming the community, uh, is to approve it, uh, but, uh, I think it's a pretty spectacular site, uh, for an elementary school and, uh, uh, really i- is going to be, uh, a project, um, that is of tremendous value to the community. Not only educationally for the students, who over the next many decades will be attending school there, uh, as well as, uh, uh, a resource for the community and, uh, and for a whole host of reasons, uh, makes all of our schools at the elementary level better off, uh, and more equitable in terms of their space and, and the needs as we continue to grow our enrollment here in Shrewsbury. We'll go over in this presentation our timeline, our progress, and the current, uh, condition of the, the Beale School facility as it currently exists, um, our school space needs across all of our K to four grades across the district, uh, the state funding opportunity investment that, uh, at play, um, how we went through the site identification and acquisition, and then, uh, the, the capacity and design of the actual project, uh, that is proposed, um, and some dates that will be coming up this fall, uh, that are of critical importance for this project to move forward. So, Mr. Collins will, uh, give you a little background about the timeline.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So, this graphic here, you've all seen before. It's just a reminder about the, uh, the building process with the Mass School Building Authority in kind of a big-picture visual way, and it shows these eight blocks, which are the so-called eight modules of school construction, um, with the MSBA. And, uh, this whole process really started back in the spring of, uh, 2015, when you as a school board and the Board of Selectmen uh, agreed to submit a statement of interest indicating, uh, both the facility deficiencies of the Beale School and our, uh, enrollment constraints with our elementary population. And it was back in, uh, March of 2016, uh, that, um, then MSBA agreed that we had a high need, uh, to do something, and so they invited us into this eligibility period on, on the far left here in the blue box. That was March of, uh, 2016. Uh, subsequently hired, um, Lamaro Pagano Associates and, and PMA Consulting, uh, as a project management team and architect. Uh, been working hard with them on the feasibility study, which is module three. All of that leading up to, uh, the schematic design, which I indicated we have just completed, that was just submitted today. In fact, uh, by, uh, Lamaro Pagano Associates to the Mass School Building Authority. And so, uh, there's, uh, basically sixty percent of the, the building has been designed. That's the amount of completion of specific de- design that's included in, uh, schematic design, so-called schematic design. So, lots of documents, lots of justification, uh, lots of detail, um, and, uh, you saw some of that at your last meeting, um, in, in the Beale presentation. So, uh, the MSBA will be poring over all of those documents and measuring against their regulations and, uh, how we've met the demands of all the checklists that are included, uh, to be required in, in the schematic design. So, really where we're left at, and we'll, we'll be repeating ourselves throughout some of this presentation, is what's left now is funding the project. That's where we're at, and we've got some dates, uh, to share about, uh, important votes upcoming. And provided we, uh, are successful with that, the design will be completed. We'd go to bidding and construction, and then, uh, opening the school and completing the project in the fall of 2021. Uh, with respect to the current Beale School, uh, I think it's worth repeating for those folks who, who may not consistently watch what's going on, that, uh, the current Beale School is a ninety-six-year-old facility, originally opened up in nineteen twenty-two. Uh, served originally as a high school, and served at a variety of different grade levels. And as part of the MSBA process in terms of evaluating a long-term solution, one of the requirements was to say, "What if?" What if you just bring the existing building up to code? What will that cost? And, uh, you heard from Lamaro Pagano Associates, uh, it was, uh, just over fifteen and a half million dollars just to do that. And, uh, even if we were to do that, uh, which would be a large, uh, investment, um, it would not solve our current, uh, space problems, uh, K through four currently, nor, uh, solve our, uh, growing enrollment problem. So, that's really not a solution. As I said, it has served us well. Uh, we have, uh, kind of gone beyond its useful life, and, uh, we're gonna need to do something, uh, in the next couple of years to, uh, solve this problem and exit ourselves from, uh, what is now, uh, an obsolete, uh, facility for public schooling.
So, put very simply, we have too many students and not enough space, and that's been the reality going on two decades at the elementary level. And the, the town, the school department had more critical needs over that twenty-year period. We needed to desecrate, open a new high school, uh, which has served us well, but is significantly overcapacity right now. Uh, we had to develop the old high school into, uh, on Oak Street into a middle school, uh, and then, uh, do something about the other, uh, building, the former junior high, middle school building, uh, which, of course, uh, became the new Sherwood Middle School. Um, and we were at a point where it, it's, uh, the most important need we have is to take care of our, our continuously, continuing, uh, to grow elementary population, uh, but that is, I think it's key to understand, uh, we already, uh, don't have adequate space for our elementary program in our existing buildings, um, not only the Beale School, but across the, uh, the entire K-four system. Um, the, uh, slide, uh, shown is, is taken from the MSBA's enrollment projection for Shrewsbury. Um, and you can see that blue line on the top is the trend for, uh, K to four, the actual, uh, going through, uh, 2015. And then, you can see it continues to trend upwards, uh, as it moves forward into the future, 2025 and beyond. Um, and, uh, I think it's, uh, important to note, um, that the enrollment, uh, design enrollment for this school, um, of seven hundred and ninety students, uh, was set by the MSBA. We certainly had local input into it, and we, we had submitted our own information that they required of us. They'd looked at their other information demographically, um, and for them to invest in our community for this project, um, they are saying you ha- you need to build a building of this size because what the MSBA does not want to do is build a building that's too small and then have the community come back to them and say, "We want more money from the MSBA to, to address enrollment needs at the K-four level." Um, so this is, uh, when people are asking about why the s- uh, size of the building is what it is, uh, it's because for the state to participate to the substantial degree they will, um, they need to make sure it's right-sized for the growing needs of, of our community, um, in terms of student enrollment. Um, the next several slides, uh, speak to some of these school space needs at the elementary level. Uh, this is a photograph from Coolidge School. We do not have a music room there because we've had to utilize that space for other, uh, academic programming or just because of the number of students we have. Um, so we have music instruction on a cart there. Um, at Beale School, um, this is a, a room where we're dividing it up between an office area and some small group instruction, uh, because of, uh, an example of some of the work that we're required to do, whether that's for English-language learners in terms of the, the kind of education they require, things that the, our older buildings were not designed, uh, to do because they weren't requirements at that point in time, special education, um, and so forth. Uh, the next slide, uh, shows, uh, it's a, it's hard to tell from the picture, but it's a very undersized room that's used as both the music and the art room at Beale School currently. Um, and it is not, uh, equitable to the other kinds of spaces that exist elsewhere in the district. It's undersized, and we have to schedule it so we can do, uh, either or. Uh, the next slide is the stage at Spring Street School, which doubles as a music classroom, uh, because, uh, a number of years ago, the room that was used for music had to be utilized for some additional special education needs. Uh, and so, it's not an appropriate classroom. Make do and make the best of it, but, um, that creates scheduling difficulties because the stage is in the cafeteria. We can't have class there during lunchtime. Um, so it, it creates a lot of logistical issues in terms of running the program. Um, so these are just some, some visual examples of, uh, why it is that, you know, we, we have too many students, not enough space, and this building project, um, is a solution to that for, for the longer term.
This next bit of information, uh, is relative to, uh, some more of the financial aspects of the Beale Project. And, uh, the title of this, uh, slide is very intentional in that, uh, we have a state funding opportunity, um, to receive a significant investment, thirty-three million dollar investment from the state on this project. Uh, but it als- it al- is also time-limited, uh, in that, um, you know, the Beale Project, when it was invited into the eligibility period or this pipeline, uh, we were one of twenty-six projects selected in that annual application cycle. It's an annual application cycle. They had ninety-seven applications that year. They selected twenty-six. We were one of the twenty-six. We have, uh, an agreement in place, um, that would provide for fifty-four point eight, uh, six per- reimbursement of all eligible project costs, uh, for this facility. And again, that is estimated to be just about thirty-three million dollars of, uh, state dollars. The MSBA is scheduled to vote on, uh, October thirty-first, Halloween, and, uh, to, uh, enter into a project scope and budget agreement with these terms. And, uh, if they, uh, we expect that they will do that, and from that date forward, uh, we have, as a local community, a hundred and twenty days to come up with our share of the funding. That's what I mean by limited time, because there are so many demands. Uh, the MSBA says, you know, "If we approve this, you have a hundred and twenty days, but if you can't get it, then we're gonna have to move on to other communities that have similar types or greater needs for facilities." So, that's why it's time-limited. Uh, just to break down the, uh, reimbursement percentage a little bit more, um, there's different categories of, uh, reimbursement, and some of them are so-called incentive points, some of them are base. Our base reimbursement rate is fifty point one six percent, and this is based upon our relative wealth. And so, they'll take a look at our community's income and, and property wealth, um, and determine through, uh, their own method what we should receive as a base reimbursement rate. Just for your information, that the lowest, or the, the bottom, uh, base rate is thirty-one percent. So, we're at fifty point one six percent. Uh, the building committee has, um, agreed to and pursued to, uh, gain additional reimbursement points, uh, by having a so-called sustainable or green building. Um, this is good, uh, to reduce our long-term operating costs. It's good for the environment, and it also gains us additional reimbursement, uh, from the state. So, that's two additional points. Uh, the MSBA looked at, uh, lots of documentation that was provided by the town and Public Buildings Department to look, uh, take a look at our maintenance procedures, our level of annual investment in, uh, maintenance, in, uh, capital, uh, projects, uh, for school facilities, and they will award up to two additional reimbursement points based upon what they see. In this case, they are awarding us one point seven percent additional reimbursement because they think we have, uh, positive plans and budgets in place on an annual basis to maintain the investment. This is really wanting to, uh, ensure that if they're gonna invest thirty-three million dollars, they want this thing to last. Uh, so, uh, they're giving us some additional reimbursement points for that. And then, construction manager, uh, manager at risk is a procurement and construction, uh, management method. And, uh, this additional point of, of reimbursement, since we're going that route, um, is, is no longer available. We were in that last eligibility period, uh, to be eligible for this type of reimbursement. It's been since gone away. So, any future projects that we might wanna pursue, uh, relative to schools in this method, we would not gain reimbursement points. So, uh, fifty-four point eight six percent, uh, is the, I'll call the nominal rate, and, uh, but there are also caps. There are all, uh, caps on, uh, what they consider eligible, uh, project costs for reimbursement, like how much site work, for example, they will reimburse. Uh, it's, it's up to eight percent of the total construction cost. So, they have various limitations, uh, in place. So, it's projected now that our, our so-called net reimbursement rate would be just over thirty-six percent of the total project cost. So, and, and again, that's thirty-three million dollars. Uh, with respect to the site identification and acquisition, uh, as was mentioned earlier, we are much gratitude and indebted to our, uh, legislators for helping to really hustle that process through, uh, the state. And, uh, also, just for informational purposes, uh, there were originally, uh, thirty-two sites that were, uh, put on a list as potentials, and, uh, those were assessed, uh, with, by our project team for suitability, um, taking into account the number of different factors like, uh, location within the town, the size of the parcel, uh, what's nearby in terms of infrastructure, and, uh, it was winnowed, winnowed down to, uh, Glavin being, uh, the top-rated site. So, everything came, came together very well there. I think, uh, again, just in terms of some of the nuts and bolts, uh, for the Beale Project, uh, we'll have capacity for, uh, seven hundred and ninety students, as you know, uh, kindergarten through, uh, grade four. Of course, this will, uh, allow for, uh, you know, the, going forward, one fewer transition for students. So, now we'll have students, uh, five, uh, elementary, uh, years of schooling at the same school, which is advantageous. And then, when we're, when we are at full, uh, capacity here, seven hundred and ninety students, uh, we'll have forty classrooms, regular education, uh, each, uh, planned to have eight sections of, uh, each grade level. So, that's kind of, uh, nuts and bolts there. Of course, dedicated spaces for art, music, media, special education, specialized instruction, as was mentioned by Dr. Sawyer, like English-language learners. And so, really, you know, this, this is a project that benefits all elementary students now and into the future. And that's really why this is, uh, important for, uh, at-large community to know that this isn't affecting just one slice of elementary school students. This is impacting positively all of them. And so, where we showed pictures that Coolidge is doing, uh, music on a cart, uh, the plan is to draw down a bit of the, the Coolidge population, um, and, uh, recapture that room for a dedicated music room. So, we'll have parity between, uh, our elementary schools when this project is completed as well. It's a hundred and forty-one thousand, uh, square-foot facility. The, uh, estimated, uh, total project cost, including construction, uh, the realignment of Lake Street, uh, to make that safer, and all of the furniture and fixtures and equipment, uh, total outfitting, including the, uh, architectural fees and everything, everything totally included is, uh, ninety-two point eight million dollars, uh, at this particular point.
The next slide, I used the, the graphic just as an icon there to remind people that this is about going forward into the future where our student population will again, uh, be projected to rise. Um, you know, the, the, what will this do on a long-term basis? It'll alleviate the overcrowding at the elementary schools by providing capacity, uh, provides an equitable educational space that, uh, Mr. Collins has spoke to across all of our elementary schools. Um, it, it gives us the capacity for the future growth, uh, that is projected. Um, it will also, uh, be situated in a geographically favorable location in town, the site not only because of the, um, uh, physical properties in, in terms of the location, um, closer to some of the new growth in town, and, and it isn't going to enable us to zone, uh, effectively as, as opposed if it were in one corner of the community, it would make it more difficult, um, to do that on a, on an equitable basis. Uh, we will have the opportunity to provide space for full-day kindergarten. Not having space has been the biggest obstacle to us offering that to all of our students, um, and that's something that, uh, as you know, uh, close to ninety-five percent of all students in public schools in Massachusetts who attend kindergarten are in a full-day program, and, and we need to get to that place. Um, and then, uh, we think it's the most cost-effective solution, of course, because of the significant state reimbursement and project subsidy that, uh, will come, um, and, uh, because again, MSBA is requiring us to make sure we build a building that's the right size for our needs going forward over time. We have some key days coming up this fall. Uh, on October twenty-second, uh, we have our special town meeting, uh, where it's a two-thirds vote of town meeting members required to approve, um, the debt that would be, uh, taken out by the town to fund the project, our portion of the project. Um, on October thirty-first, the MSBA board will vote, uh, to create a project scope and budget agreement as to what their share will be, um, and that allows us to enter into that agreement with them. Um, and then, uh, November sixth, which is election day, uh, here for the state election, uh, and federal election, uh, there'll be a separate ballot, uh, that the Board of Selectmen have placed, uh, to have an election, uh, for the town to vote, uh, on whether to, uh, authorize a debt exclusion under, uh, Proposition Two and a Half, um, to be able to, uh, fund the project, and that just requires a simple majority to pass. Um, then beyond that, in fall of two thousand and nineteen, the project team will complete the design. Construction will begin, and, uh, we'll look to open a new school in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, if this all goes forward. Um, one date that's not on the, the screen that actually, uh, came about just as of last night, is that, uh, we'll, we'll be certainly, uh, communicating this, uh, but the, uh, Beale Building Committee, um, is going to host a tour of the current Beale Facility, um, at six PM on, uh, Tuesday, I'm sorry, Monday? Is that the Monday, September twenty-fourth? Is that right?
Yes.
Monday, September twenty-fourth, at six PM. Monday, September 24th, at 6:00 PM, followed by a public hearing, also to be held at the current Beal School, for anyone who has questions or comments about the project, so that the building committee can take those under advisement. And so we'll be sure to publicize that to the community as well for those who are interested in having their questions answered. And so we're going to be very busy over the coming weeks and months. And I certainly am advocating for the community to support this project. I think that we have a track record in Shrewsbury. Certainly, over the two decades I've been here, I had the opportunity to come when the community had made the decision and built the new Floral Street School, which is still in excellent shape now that it's two decades old. And then moving forward to the high school in Oak, Parker Road, and most recently, the Sherwood Middle School. We have award-winning schools that came in in a very responsible fashion in terms of budget. And I know that the community can count on us doing the same thing here in terms of making the most responsible, cost-effective project to meet the educational needs of our community. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions or hear any comments the committee has at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins. And I'll also note that Mrs. Fritz has been our school committee representative to the Beal Committee, and certainly thank you for all of the work that you've put into this effort. Colleagues, questions or comments on the building project? Mrs. Fritz?
Yeah, I think it bears repeating that. It's such a thorough process. This is my first time I know Erin sat in on the Sherwood project. The MSBA is a check and balance. There is nothing that goes unnoticed. It's amazing, the schematic design report that went in, the magnitude of that report. Yes, we want a right-sized building so it meets the needs now and into the future. We need it to be cost-effective for the community. But I think the piece that we really should also focus on is that educational programming, like, you know, Ms. Belcito and Ms. Clouder, I mean, they have a tremendous amount of work in that. And it's a really interesting read for that submission, for anybody who wants to. It's on the town website within the Beal Building Committee documents. It's a very big document. But I think we're doing this for lots of reasons, but education is first. And then we want a building that's going to be efficient and effective for long-term needs. And I think this is, this model is wonderful. It's just a really great project. And we're dealing, you know, with our PMA and LPA, the people we deal with are just really good to work with. And they know the community, and they know the needs of the community. So I think that's making the process better as well.
Further questions or comments from the committee? Mrs. Gonzano?
Um, I think it's, you highlighted, Pat, a really important point, that this is not just impacting, like, one slice, or maybe it was you, the fact that this, when you showed the bar graph of how many students in the growth, there's over 2,000 elementary students, and this new school will be impacting not just the kindergarten. Like, when we think of Beal, you think of kindergarten, the kindergarten students. This is impacting thousands of students. And I thought it was very helpful that you showed the pictures of the spaces in the schools. That's not something, you know, I was aware of what it looked like, the music carts and things. And I think that those, that's helpful information to get out to the public about what those spaces look like. And so for those who aren't fully paying attention yet and hear of a Beal School replacement, or renovation, or new building, that idea that it's going to impact thousands of students, I think, makes people more invested in the outcome.
Mr. Wensky?
I think we talked about it a little bit in the HR presentation about how this is a desirable community to live in, in large part because of the schools and how great they are. And, you know, I think, you know, we certainly see that in the enrollment projections from the MSBA. And Erin, I think you said it right, this is more than just about a new Beal School building. Yes, we need a new building. There's no doubt. I mean, just, you know, just the tour will help you understand that. But it's more than that. It's the positive impact that it has throughout the district for elementary levels. So I just, I think a lot of thought went into the design and, you know, the multi-use of space. It's a very thorough process. As you said, a lot of mandatory requirements to stay in that eligibility. And we're fortunate to be in this position, you know. And I go back to the very beginning of this process, the applications and, you know, the 97 that were submitted and only a quarter were accepted. And we were one of those 26. So definitely important to note those things.
If I may, just along those lines, the reminder, and those who maybe not have been or new to the community, you may recall that the community actually deferred entrance into this process when we were first invited, because it came at the same time as the operational override that the town was seeking. And that became a two-year delay just because of the way the process works. If, for whatever reason, the community chose not to advance this project with the MSBA, I would, not only would we miss out on moving forward now, if we went back into and applied again, every year is an independent assessment. But they also will, I would think that the MSBA would be very reluctant to look at a community that said, "No, thank you," twice. And I think there was very good reasons to say, "No, thank you" the first time. But in terms of this time, I mean, really, if the community were not to support it, I think the participation of the MSBA to the $233 million would, is not going to be coming around again soon. And of course, costs over time are just going to escalate even more. So I think the responsible, fiscally responsible piece to do at this point is to move forward and find a way to fund this project and have it go forward.
Mrs. Fritz, you?
And I think it's important to, we've heard comments, "Oh, the building, it's already done. It's a done deal."
Right.
We are, we're in the process, but it requires a town vote. And I think those are things people need to know. You know, you look at that timeline, there are very important dates coming up that the community really needs to be aware of.
Certainly. And I'll add on to that, you know, I, Mrs. Fritz referenced the fact that this is a very thorough process, and certainly it is. And those folks who are concerned about the community making the right investment should take comfort in that. I also know for those folks who might just be tuning in now, who might just be hearing about it, that it can also be an extremely complex proposition that the community is being asked to look at. And so for me, it boils down to a few key points. I'll highlight two of them. The first is that it's been abundantly clear for a long time that the current site is no longer able to meet our needs. It's almost 100 years of age. It was not used as a school for a notable portion of that for a few decades. Over $15 million needed just to bring it up to code. The MSBA would not likely participate in that, and it wouldn't meet our current space needs, let alone future space needs. So that would be Shrewsbury taxpayers by themselves throwing good money after bad. So the status quo is not going to work. But the second is just that this new project that is before us, I think, is a really good investment for the community. Construction costs are only going up as time moves forward, so there's no value to a delay. We have the state paying for a significant portion of the building. We have a project that's not only going to replace a school that's not meeting our needs now, but is going to help meet district-wide elementary space needs. And I know some folks may tend to evaluate a school construction project as to whether or not, you know, you might live near that school. Well, a few things to consider. First of all, we're going to see space freed up at all of our elementary schools. The presentation we just heard referenced some of the spaces that are not used for their original intent for non-programmatic purposes. We're going to see that improve at all of our elementaries. But also, one of the things we hear about most consistently as a school committee is that we do not or are not able to offer full-day kindergarten to all families who want it, having to lottery for that, having, you know, some people assume it's a money issue, some people assume, might assume it's a philosophy issue. It's a space issue primarily. We are not able to do that. We're one of the last districts in that regard. And to bring us into the 21st century, this is, this is something that really needs to be done. So I want to thank you for the presentation. I appreciate members of the community who have taken the time to learn about this. I do want to highlight, you said it was September 24th, that tours will be available to the community. And will we have that information available, either on the building projects site or the district website?
We'll send out a communication through the district, and we'll place it on our website as well. I'm sure there'll be something on the Beal Building Committee website, too.
Excellent. Thank you both.
Thank you.
And the next item on our agenda, under new business, is the appointment to the Board of Directors of the Shrewsbury Media Connection Incorporated, a vote by this committee. By way of background, the school committee has been seeking one member to fill our appointment to the newly-formed Shrewsbury Media Connection Incorporated Board of Directors, following the transition of SMC to being a nonprofit organization. The duties of the Board of Directors are to oversee the Public Access Center, hire the executive director, approve the annual operating budget, set policies and procedures for SMC, and set and implement marketing and fundraising programs. The role starts on October 1st of this year for a three-year term set to expire on October 1st of 2021. The superintendent had issued a request for applications, and will be making a recommendation to the committee tonight regarding our appointment to that new board. So I will turn it over to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. It was, we solicited applications, and I received two applications for the position. The individual that I am recommending to the committee is Mr. Wei Xu, also known as Brian Xu, who is a longtime Shrewsbury resident, who has a background where he worked for, originally, in the field of pharmaceutical research. He's actually an assistant professor at Worcester State University. He's also known to the school committee and many in the community as the principal and chair of the Board of the Massachusetts Beijing Chinese Language School, which holds Mandarin Chinese classes on weekends over at the UMass Medical School campus, and who puts on the annual Chinese New Year celebration that our students in our Mandarin classes participate in every year. It's a wonderful celebration that he coordinates. In his application, he indicates that he strongly supports the mission of the Shrewsbury Media Connection Incorporated, particularly as it relates to educational programming that benefits the community. He's interacted with the SMC regarding the recording and broadcast of the Chinese New Year event. And based on my own interactions with Dr. Xu over the years and his reputation, I am confident that he will be an excellent member of the SMC Incorporated Board and represent the interests of the community. And as the appointee of the school committee, particularly issues around educational programming on our local cable system. And with that, I would advise the committee to approve Dr. Xu's appointment and look forward to him serving over the next three years.
Excellent. Questions or comments from the committee? I will say that I've gotten to know Mr. Xu over the years. I regularly attend the Beijing Chinese Language Schools annual presentation, which I highly recommend anybody attended. It is a fabulous, wonderful display of Chinese and Chinese-American culture, put on at Oak Middle School each year. It has just become a real cornerstone community event. So seeing no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the committee vote to appoint Mr. Wei Xu Xu as its appointed member to the Board of Directors of Shrewsbury Media Connection Incorporated for a three-year term from October 1st, 2018 to October 1st of 2021.
So moved.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. And we have moved on to the approval of minutes. We have a set of minutes enclosed from our first meeting of the year, that is the school committee meeting of Wednesday, August 29th. The meeting minutes have been approved by Mrs. Fritz, who is our committee secretary, and are included in our materials. Any questions, comments, corrections, or deletions? Seeing none, these minutes are accepted without objection. We do need to go into executive session this evening. At this time, we'll entertain a motion that the school committee enter into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining with the Shrewsbury Education Association, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes, and reconvene only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening.
So moved.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussions? Seeing none, this motion requires a roll call vote to pass. Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzano?
Aye.
Mr. Palich?
Aye.
Thank you.